Building, we have the black and white drape over the entryway. Kind of took a page out of the fire department there, just showing respect to the ones that serve this community. Recently, we lost Gary Rosenberg. He was an elected official, you know, a long-term resident and a huge supporter of this town. So I just, uh, can we take a minute just out of respect for him, please? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, or not the agenda, we're going to open up a public hearing on the proposed development agreement. The city's going to enter into a development agreement with Patriot Custom Metals/Palm Shields for the business operation going up there next to the golf course in the old Goodkind Building. Paula Hazelwood is here from Southwest, Advanced Southwest Iowa. If the council or anyone has any questions, anybody have any questions concerned, gripes, complaints, anything?
Can you tell me what their zoning should be?
The zoning of...
The zoning of the place, are they going to rezone?
No.
Going to say a C1?
C, yes, C1.
I don't know if this is where to say that. Is it possible on these contracts, uh, since we'll probably have a new attorney as of tonight, that we can have him look at them and have it contingent of how, what he's, if he sees anything that we should be wary of?
We already, this was outsourced through our bond counsel, legal.
So somebody else has already looked at it?
Yes.
Okay.
The gentleman, you were at that meeting, the gentleman that was on the screen.
Okay.
Were you there? You were there, weren't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the agreement was written by Alarz Nkouni, Nathan Overberg from Alarz Nkouni in Des Moines, a professional attorney that we use for these specific agreements. So that developer agreement that you all received a few weeks ago is, was what he had prepared for us. And it's been pre-signed by the developer and it's ready for the mayor's signature. There's a resolution for that later this evening.
I guess I was thinking more in terms of the next one that we're going to have on the agenda, so.
No, Mr. Obradovich most of the time doesn't be involved, or the city attorney. We outsourced this through bond counsel and their legal, legal team.
Thank you.
No questions? Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Was the second, who was the second?
Aaron.
Aaron, can you pull your microphone? Thank you. Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
All right, we're going to start the regular meeting. Can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda, I'd please ask that the council add, under my name, number three, Twisted Smoke. It's an address change.
And then there's one addition down in the resolution, if not Nicholas Sanders, it's actually Nicholas Dargy for wage resolution, letter I, under resolutions and ordinances.
He's with the police department, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Next item is the consent agenda. I think all of you can see what's on it. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Do I need to abstain from that for E?
Say that again?
For E, do I need to abstain from that? It's not mine, but...
I think you're all right. Okay. We're under appointments. A, city attorney, a one-year appointment. What's the council want to do?
Bring him on. Making a motion to accept David Levy as the new city attorney?
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Levy is sitting here with us, so if he'd come on up and take the seat...
I'd like to present.
Right on.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Should I give a brief description of himself?
Yeah. I know, David, you want to take a second, just give a description of yourself and...
Mayor, council members, members of the public, David Levy, partner and chair of the municipal law practice at the Baird Home Law Firm in Omaha. I'm licensed to practice in Nebraska, Iowa, Kansas, and California. Serve as city attorney for the city of David City, Nebraska, and special counsel for numerous cities in Nebraska and Iowa and electric utilities and other entities as well. So we've, we've had the pleasure to work for Carter Lake as kind of special counsel on special items for about eight years now, and excited to be city attorney and appreciate the opportunity. Look forward to working with the council and the members of the community.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, city clerk, so two-year appointment. What's the council want to do?
We had discussed earlier that we'd like to have one more month, maybe have a bigger workshop, just to discuss things with Jackie and amongst ourselves as to upcoming things. So I'd like to make a motion to table it till next Monday?
I don't think that, that's not possible. I mean, she's the city clerk and the city treasurer. I mean, at the workshop, kind of gave you that opportunity on Wednesday, and nobody brought up any items of concern. I mean, it's, it's a difficult decision if you choose, you know, either way, but I mean, I think tonight you make the decision who you put in that position.
Two years ago, it was done in February. It wasn't on the January agenda.
Well, it's on the agenda tonight. I don't know why it wouldn't have been on the January agenda two or three years ago. I couldn't answer that. But I mean, we brought this up at the workshop. Nobody brought up any questions, concerns, possible different outcomes, or, I mean, so how did that come about in a few days?
It didn't come about just a few days. It was that same evening.
Actually, you're incorrect. It was on January 17th, 2022's agenda.
The appointment for the clerk was on the January.
Not until there's some council action.
I'll make a motion to reappoint for Jackie Carl.
I'll second.
You have, you want to comment?
Attorney?
Public comment, go ahead.
My only public comment is that routinely, items are moved from one agenda to the next when somebody suggests that it should be tabled for what it's, for some apparent reason. I'm not sure there's any apparent reason tonight, although it looks like we don't have a full council, and I don't know if everybody is eligible to vote tonight.
Why don't we have a full council?
Aren't there supposed to be seven people?
No, ma'am, this is a full council.
Aye. Is everybody eligible to vote tonight?
Yes.
Pardon me, please?
You'd have to ask them. You'd have to ask them. I, what do you say, Victor?
We're all eligible to vote.
Okay.
Aaron, are you eligible to vote tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I can, yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Roll call, please. Come on, come on up. Anybody else have a public comment on this item?
Hi, just three, hi, Jason. I'm Tim Mandoff. I've lived in the Clough area pretty much all my life. Well, I said get straight to the point, so I will. I'd like first to ask about the security cameras in the city building. Can I ask questions like these? I have a few questions, I'll make it very quick.
There is no security cameras in the building.
I would like to know why there is no sec...
I didn't build the building, I don't know why it doesn't have security cameras.
Did you guys ask back and forth, say, hey, we need security cameras in these buildings?
It was brought up when Jason was on the council before, and then it never went...
I mean, it's, it's not wise to sit here and discuss our security systems, but no, there's, there's none here, sir.
Okay, could I ask the council in the future maybe to do something about the cameras? I mean, what happens if somebody breaks it? What happens if violence, today's days, nothing's recorded? I'm amazed. Second question is, I was talking, you guys had a meeting a couple nights ago you were talking about?
Yes.
And there was something about, brought up, I believe it was from you, about I was offered a $10,000, some type of a settlement, and I refused it.
It was an offer through ICAP. They submitted when they denied your...
Ron, that is totally false. I heard that today for the first time. I have two letters here from ICAP. There is no offer, I have never...
It's not a dollar amount. It does say there's an offer on the bottom, if you feel that this is a...
No, there is no offer whatsoever.
Can you please go back to the microphone?
Please go, any, any and all reimbursements can be covered...
That was on the rush, please read the second page after I referred to you that I fell on the top, not on the steps. Please read the second page.
Well, this is ICAP, though. That's our insurance.
Yes, now we just, this was, this was previous, this is...
I'm not going to discuss with you, Tim, which ones, are the insurance company, I did visit with them in length over this, and they did deny your claim, but they did offer for reimbursements, and you didn't put in for any reimbursements, and it's spelled out, but it's spelled out in there.
I'm telling you right now, the second letter says that the city of Carter Lake is not reliable, they will not pay anything, and this is not even my discussion, this has nothing to do with why I made it up here for it, but this...
All right, but we're on topic for the, you have a, for the city clerk appointment. So come up to the microphone, and if you have an issue, we're getting...
So in regards to the city clerk, I would like to know, why would you tell somebody there's a $10,000, I was, I was offered $10,000?
You, you can bring that question to me. That is our liability cap, a $10,000 out of court settlement, up to that dollar amount for reimbursements of medical.
Thank you. Vic, is that what you guys were told to the rest of the, to you guys? Was it mentioned that I was offered any cash, any kind of an offer last night at your meeting to the rest of you? Was I offered any kind of...
They had the notes from ICAP as well, the same, the same letters you have.
Okay. I totally disagree, well, they were, in the end, they didn't offer me anything, and I told you previously that I paid nothing. I actually paid seven out of my pocket, which is no...
I know, but you showed me the letter from ICAP to you that states at that bottom paragraph for reimbursement, and...
Yes, and then after I...
Right. Well, so it shows that they did offer reimbursement, Tim. It shows right on that letter.
Not after I told you, no, it doesn't. Sorry. Um, I'm, 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 hold on one second. And then I, you guys seen the letter about me being told to get out of the city office by Jackie for no apparent reason, because I was lying. I'd like to know what I was lying about, and I'd like to know why...
Your grievance was brought up to the council on Wednesday.
Yes.
And I asked the council if they wanted to take any actions, and they told me to handle it.
Okay.
So I handled, like I told you, she, if she has a conflict with you or anybody else, let one of the other employees handle it. And I told you the same thing. If you come in and you have bad blood with somebody, just use one of the other girls.
That is true, but I shouldn't have to have blood, blood with any...
I agree, we're all adults here. We, we should, we should act it. You're, you're right.
I came up and all I asked for was a simple, simple email, and I was told to get out of the goddamn building, or what would happen? You would have called the police on me. And I think that is very, very, and the reason I sent that letter to let you three know what's been taking place with me the past year. And there is so much more, Jackie, that goes on, and you know it.
I talked with her, we're all in the public service here, and I reminded her, and like I said, I believe we have it handled. I'm, I'm sorry you feel we don't, Tim, but it, the docs been removed, the claim's been denied, and I believe we're past that point. If your feelings got hurt with what was said, we apologize.
No, it hasn't. My feelings being hurt, it's with Jackie in regards to being respectable. She's a clerk. She's a clerk at the city building. He's our attorney now, right? Am I supposed to be told to get out of the government building for no reason whatsoever?
You need to direct your questions, you need to direct your questions to...
May I ask the attorney?
At this point, we're not asking legal advice. I told you that...
I know the legal advice.
I told her not to do it again. She was reminded to let other staff handle it if you have an issue.
I'm totally done, but just to you three new ones that just came on, she is not what she says she is. I have so many emails back and forth, and you called me a liar, and then you told me to get out of the city building, and you're a clerk? Come on.
All right, any other public comment?
This is your guys' job. If you like her or don't like her, I don't care, she gets behind the clock, that's not my, I don't care.
Mrs. Patterson, go ahead.
Okay, Sharon Patterson, I would like to say Jackie Carl has been just such an asset to our city. She came in with such a mess, and she has been able to get it started. Is that him talking?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second to...
I'd ask that the council make a motion to table this for one more month. I don't believe that you entertained Jackie's motion equitably.
There was no second. Now there's a motion and a second, so they're going to take action.
Okay, then I would intercede that maybe we...
It was Victor's motion.
Yeah, it was Victor, it wasn't...
Change this to be one year rather than two years. I echo the sentiments of...
We're gonna, we're gonna ask our legal counsel here. It's a two-year appointment set out in public policy.
You have a motion and a second on the floor. Before you do anything else, you need to take action on that.
All right.
Can you tell us, is it possible if we choose to put it off for a month?
You'd be retired.
I, I don't have the information at this time to do that, but what I can tell you is, as a matter of Robert's Rules of Orders, and as a matter of your procedural rules, you have a motion and a second on the floor, so you need to take action on that motion and the second. If the maker of the motion wants to amend his motion and the seconder accepts that amendment, that, that's a different story. But right now, you have a motion and a second on the floor to reappoint Ms. Carl to the position of city clerk for a two-year term.
All right, sounds like we need to take action. Could we, real quick, Bill?
If, I mean, I heard the word compromise. I'm here, I'm not here to debate anything, anybody's job performance. Victor, you basically were making a motion, for lack of a better word, Ron had his input. Jackie, I believe you were ready to make a second, so, for lack of a better word, your motion to table it was hijacked, and then you folks were put into the pressure of making this decision. No matter what happens, if you vote tonight, here's what's going to happen. Let's say it's a two to three vote, then it's going to be contentious, because now you've made it known that you are not in favor of hiring Jackie. So by table it for 30 days...
At the last meeting, we asked for the issues so we could work through this, and none of them were brought forward. So like our newly elected or appointed attorney said, it's time to take action on the...
But Victor is the, is the person that does the vote, am I right? The council has the vote, and to keep from having something legally done down the road, I'd like to have you go back to your motion, you're going to make your second, and then go from there before we hijack it and go to a second. So be legal.
So I had the, the last time I was on the council, I tried to move it to the off-year, and they told us we could not. It couldn't have been a one-year, because I wanted to move it to the opposite year of election, so somebody don't come in and on day one have to make a, a decision about somebody's job that they've never worked with.
From what I've read...
They told me at the time that you could not, you couldn't make a one-year, it had to be a two-year...
From what I've read in the Iowa code, that's up to the council to decide.
Not the night of the appointment, I agree.
If you vote for two years tonight, then it would be hard to switch it. If you make that decision first, then you could go with that.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to another 30 days to, to talk about it, but we just tried to do this last Wednesday, and nobody had no issues.
Right.
I mean, I...
The few we have, we discussed.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, if we want to, the only issue that brought up was, I just thought we needed to be more personable in city, or, I thought we needed to be more public friendly, and the other issue was getting the agendas and minutes on time, getting everything on time.
Which, again, we received the minutes late tonight.
So do you want to make like a probationary type thing, or do you want to, I mean, do you just...
That's what I'd like to do.
What's going to change in the next month, I guess? What do we want to...
Sit down and discuss what we'd like to see.
I did that last week. I'm, I'm just going to move forward with my motion.
All right, sounds like we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
The question's been called.
To me, that she made a motion to table this, and it was never...
She never made the motion, and there was no second.
Can we have a record replay?
Victor just made the motion, said it died, so...
I don't even believe I made a motion, I think it was a discussion.
Okay, it was just discussion. He said he didn't make a motion.
There was no motion made.
Is anybody recording this so that we can see exactly what just happened? With the motion is set aside for 30, 30 days versus moving forward?
He just had the gentleman who said he made the motion, he didn't make a motion, so...
Channel 22, open for discussion.
Channel 22 is still blacked out. It's 90 days. I'm not sure if this is even being taped. Table it for 30 days, please. There may be a lawsuit if you don't do it the right way. Please wait for 30 days.
Bill, you was at the meeting Wednesday, you didn't have, you didn't have no issues either.
Channel 22, I said 22 and...
We've all talked, we're just voting on it.
Jason, discussion, may I? Jason, the discussion was channel 22, and you said, I need to get a life. I need to get a life, and all I want you to do...
Bill, Bill, we're getting off topic here. I mean, it's an appointment.
Wait 30 days and see how she performs. We've not seen her in work.
I'm, I'm new here, but you have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yes, we got, we got to take that.
And the question's been called.
Okay, roll call, please.
As a matter of procedure, please.
Can I say something?
And now he said we had to do roll call.
Well, I just want to tell you, sorry to interrupt you, Ron. I voted for every one of you. This girl has treated me so rotten. You all know it. I told you guys. You came up last week and you accused me.
Tim, Tim, that, that, Tim, that's enough.
Well, come on.
Tim, Tim, you, you made your point on paper, I put it in front of them, they took no action. I, I can't tell you that again.
Okay, so you guys are all right with being, you're okay with being told to get out of the city building? And that's against the law, isn't it?
All right, roll call, please.
Quickly, not right, not right. Yeah, you were hit and black.
Jackie?
Get it done. Get it done.
Aaron?
Abstain.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
All right, next item is mayor pro tem. I'd like to get this done tonight, where I'm going to recommend that Jason Gunderson fulfill the mayor pro tem duties.
Make a motion to put him in.
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Abstain.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Planning board members, we have two that are going to be reappointed. We can just do them both, Ms. Haran, Mr. Evers.
Why don't you take them one at a time?
One at a time, all right. First one's Drew Evers.
Oh, put them on. Make a motion to accept Drew Evers on the planning board for five years.
Second.
Public comment? Roll call, please.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Abstain.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Next one's Robert Haran.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Next item, communications department supervisors, don't see any. We're going to move on to my items. First item's a SWIPCo. This came about under, under Jerry's service, I believe. I don't know if it was involved with Russ. It's Southwest Iowa Planning.
This is where they want us to pay him $2,500.
We've been paying it. I don't know, does the council want them to come and explain what they do, or do they just want to, I, we, we are a member of Advanced Southwest Iowa, we're a member of MAPPA. I'm sure there, there's probably advantages to be members of SWIPCo. It's, it's under, what, 3,000, what's the total?
$2,400.
Twenty, twenty-some hundred dollars. Do we, do we want one of the representatives to come down and, and explain to us their programs? Do we want to continue? You want to cancel? What, what do you want to do?
I'd like to hear what they got to say.
Definitely let them speak their piece.
Okay, we'll try to get them down here in the next few months to explain what they can offer. Next item's NPAC 5G, the new rate proposal. That's our grant writer.
That's not in effect till next year.
Do we want to, there was discussion this, about this at our last meeting. Do we want to put that on a workshop and decide if we're going to continue with them?
What is the, the dates? I, I never did see that.
Uh, the, this will be effective, I believe, February of '24 for $1,000 a month. So the agreement would terminate on January thirty-first of twenty-four, the current agreement.
All right, we got this full year.
Now Shannon's not here, I wish Shannon was here to tell you.
She's here.
Is she? Well, get up here and tell them what happened today. Something good.
Kind of, kind of. Um, so today, I said last week that I was waiting to hear from the grant that we had out there. We did receive a letter this, this afternoon and my mailman probably thinks I have a crush on him because I hugged him after this. Um, we did get awarded the grant for twenty-one thousand, two-hundred and twenty-four dollars. So, and it is to update, do updates to the Carter Lake Public Library.
Awesome.
And that was with the assistance of this grant writer company.
So is the, the city want to stay with the grant writer, look for alternatives? What's the?
I'd say she's come through pretty well, considering forty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, if she, I mean, if she's getting grants, then you're on with her.
After hearing the discussion, uh, the other night at the workshop, it sounds like, I, I'll, I'll mix everybody's names up. Our librarian, our parks director, and our clerk, rather than spend five hundred bucks to a grant writer, which creates a competition amongst people to get that grant writer to help them, they seem to be the best grant writers there are, and the clerk's been doing it all over her career, so you might entertain the idea of not renewing that, is it five hundred a month?
Thousand.
It's a thousand.
Thousand.
It's going up.
It's a new proposal.
Well, then.
How much did you say she got last year in grants?
I thought it was five hundred a month.
It was, the la, this is a new proposal.
So rather than.
Twenty-five thousand last year and forty-five the year before.
But she gets a percentage of what she gets in the grant. The thousand dollars is for basically writing grants, once she's rewarded grant, she gets a piece of that.
Well, just a suggestion.
But it's very small percentage.
I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use the number five hundred. Um, if you divided that amongst three people, let's say, um, a dollar an hour, that's gonna motivate them even more and you're gonna keep it in-house and you're gonna save money. Um, as I said, all three of them are capable grant, grant writers, so rather than pay somebody outside and have to give up the ten percent, that would stay here.
I don't know that, are you opposed to it?
The percentages aren't going up any, it's only five percent.
I don't need any more work.
What?
I honestly don't need any more work.
That's what I thought.
You know, Shannon, Shannon and Kendra have worked on some small grants, um, you know, small ones.
The big ones take quite a bit of writing.
And some of them are very lengthy and, and there's a long process behind them.
Yeah.
Mrs. Walls worked with this the most, do you feel it's an asset or not, Amel?
I think that today definitely shows that it's paying off and.
They make the motion and.
I think that with all the green space ones that we're looking at, and she's got several that she's, she's working on that one for the generators, I'd say that we at least give it another year.
I'll make a motion to approve it then.
Approve it and, oh.
Jason made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
The motion is to approve the new proposal, correct?
The new proposal, yes.
It don't, it doesn't take effect till the end of the month, or the beginning of next month.
So it'll be February first. Roll call. Victor.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Next item's the item we added, Twisted Smoke, he, we gave him, or, a, uh, tobacco license, it basically was at a mobile one, he's going to a brick and mortar building, today he's asking for his license to be changed to twenty-eight, ten North Ninth, so it's just an address change.
Yeah, and this will be effective for six months until the June thirtieth when we renew all of them, then he'll be in the same group.
I'll make a motion.
Has that building been inspected? Don't we have to have it inspected?
It will all be inspected prior to the state license, yes. The hardware store.
I'll make my motion contingent on approving it, of the inspections.
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Jackie.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Victor.
Yes.
Next item's, Ms. Wall.
Oh, we talked about, um, having the board applications and I noticed that even on that Sioux City one that I was looking at that we're taking our thing from, they use applications that they use in their selection of people on boards. So, this is another one that I pulled from the Iowa code, suggestion from Iowa, that they recommend being used, and I'd given you the other one before.
Too much.
I, the one I gave you originally was a little bit more simpler.
I personally, there should be maybe like three questions on the application, the name, what board you wanna be on and why you're interested in it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't think you need to go home and take a two-page test to be on a voluntary board.
I pulled that one off the state today.
Do we have to, uh?
The one I gave you last week was a one-page one.
Do we have to approve the, do we have to approve one of these, does it be on the agenda?
I would recommend that you're, if you're gonna go with an application, you approve one of them, yes.
But we can't do it tonight anyway, right?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Oh, it is down.
This is a single-page one.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's the one under it. There were, um, I'm gonna pass those down, those were the two that I showed you last week. So, two pages out.
I think just a simple straightforward form, it's like this top half right there. Name, address, email, phone number, and interest in specific board.
Is that a motion, Victor?
I make a motion to simplify the, uh, application for board members.
There's one of them that's pretty simple.
That Palo on.
The Palo.
The Palo's not bad, it's pretty, pretty basic.
He's got it done.
That, that's the one he's looking at.
Yeah.
You wanna use that?
So that's your motion?
But I don't believe you need all your other qualifications and your experience.
So you just want the top half?
Yes.
Can everybody see what Victor's explaining? Just fold it under or something.
I mean, if somebody has something to give and they wanna express it, I don't see them having a problematic, problem of putting out there what they have to offer.
For the experience part?
No, the other qualifications.
Skills, qualifications.
You, you could put a parenthetical optional with that.
Sure.
So nobody feels obligated, yeah, I agree. By giving them the chance.
I mean, again, it's volunteers, we don't wanna deter anybody from it, but it's nice to have a record of, kept of people that have signed up for it or has shown interest and people log.
I normally would not have anything to say about this, but literally like two days ago, I just went through board training on a board I serve on, um, and one of the things that they had stated, not about applications, but if you're gonna do an application, it's good to like know what is already filled on your board, so in other words, if you want somebody with legal experience or accounting experience and things of that sort, but nothing, nothing personal needs to be on there, like it should literally be a name, a phone number, and what the, what they should bring.
This is the one that we're thinking, that we'll make good. Uh, they, they said we're gonna leave the others happening too about this.
Just the front.
Just the only page.
So where do these applications go, are they gonna be placed in the council packet? They just.
Uh, you can get them offline.
No, I'm saying, once they're filled out, I don't think we need public information out there on, on someone trying to apply, they're Googling names and looking at their, their questionnaire and trying to disqualify them, I, I don't want that to happen at a meeting. If, if we're okay with the applications, the applications come to me, I make a recommendation, but we're not gonna sit here and dissect my decision, you know, this person's qualified or, or they say he's good or bad, I mean, is that what you're looking for, for you to qualify him or for the person filling the board?
Almost every other city in Iowa does.
Yep, I'm asking your point, though, do you want them included in the packet for council members?
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
Um, if you go to the last agenda from the city of Sioux City, all of them are included in the council packet, but the board makes the decision together, you know, they have an evaluation process, so I mean, you could continue, your, your ordinances say that the mayor appoints the planning commission, um, but your other boards are recommendations from like the library board or whatever. I mean, you could go, look at your ordinance and simplify it or add more to it, but in Sioux City, they do add the, the applications are in the packet.
They even talk about interviewing the certain people that are recommended.
But, but that's also saying, the city of Sioux City is seventy-five thousand people, you know, four thousand, so they have a lot more candidates and a lot more businesses, but they are public information once, once they're submitted to City Hall.
Do you have something, Risa?
Yeah, so, I think adding an extra step to getting people to volunteer is just gonna make it harder. I mean, we struggle enough to get volunteers to coach, to, you know, be on boards and do everything else, that adding that extra step and doing interviews or whatever else is just gonna make it that much difficult to get.
Would you fill this out?
I don't know, I don't know what's up.
Anybody that's willing to volunteer has no problem with putting their.
This is, this is basically as it gets, don't read the X, we're gonna leave all that in.
Vic, is your motion for that, that one?
Palo.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Are you just talking the top part? Not the rest of it?
The experience and the other qualifications.
Optional on.
Optional, yeah, according to attorney.
Well, I think you need all of it, I think you need, have to know something about the people that you're voting on.
But you do, we live in a small town, we know each other.
We don't know everybody, I've had names put in front of me up here that I had no idea who they were.
And I, I get that to an extent, but it's still hard, like on our Carter Lake Days Committee, we have five of us, you know, it's hard to get those people to come out and help volunteer for things, so why add that extra thing? I'm not standing up here to be a jerk, I mean, legit, like I care about the events we do here, and I care about coaching, and it's hard when I say to Kendra, hey, I'll, I'll coach my football and I know nothing about it, just so these kids can play. So why do that extra step to make these?
Why, why does every other city do it?
Who cares about every other city, we're Carter Lake.
Keep it limited to us.
There again, we, we got a motion and a second on the table, so I'm gonna ask for roll call, please, thank you.
Aaron.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Victor.
Yes.
Jackie.
Okay, by interest in specific board, I don't know.
It's option. Everything from here down will say option, option, option.
I thought we were just saying the other qualifications are optional.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just the bottom. Other qualification, everything else you should fill out and other qualifications are optional.
Victor.
Victor's saying, only down to here.
Victor held up his, his application with an X, now it's motioned and second, so.
Well, that's not what the, the attorney made a comment about.
No, we came back and changed the motion.
It's very simple, guys, we'll, we'll, we'll make it work.
Maybe this is complicated.
If we're gonna.
Maybe what?
This sheet.
Get it done, let's get it done one time right here.
With optional after all three?
We'll discuss it.
Well, we, we can't change the motion now that we're halfway through voting.
Motion's already on the floor.
The council understood the motion.
Ron.
Yeah.
Do you have people just begging to get on the board?
No, I have to beg them.
That's exactly right, so if anybody's willing to do it.
I have to knock on doors and beg them and tell them hello.
But, but on the same fact, when you do have people that come from the other side and they call and say, "We feel it's all favoritism," or "We feel people get to pick everything," it'd be just clear and clerical to just have it right there on paper to see why we picked somebody, so it's not just.
Well, I don't know why we're picking somebody, we're begging people.
But we're.
Are we, I mean, I saw a post on Facebook and there were probably a dozen people that jumped in and said they'd like to be on the parking rec and take one.
Something that can always be changed, so I may just move through it.
That was just.
All right, guys, wait, Jackie, what, what's your, what's your vote here?
I'm, we're gonna look at it, right?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
We're, we're approving it now and it can always be changed if, if we don't like it, so.
We take it as is with optionals.
We take it as is for now.
Optional is the last one.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
All right.
And, and I'll just say for the council, um, these documents, once they're provided to the city, are public records.
Yeah.
But there is an exception to the public records law for documents that would, uh, people reasonably feel would injure the reputation of people, so we can talk about it more at some time, but if the, if the council feels that the mayor should review these and the council wants to review them in the office rather than having them in the council packet because they feel that whatever somebody writes on there might do harm to their reputation or that it might, inhibit somebody from applying because they know that whatever they put on there is gonna be public, and I doubt they're gonna, you know, put anything on there, but if they wanna do that, that is something that can be withheld within the law.
All right. Next item, Jackie Carl.
Okay, so I provided you of the start of the budget schedule and, um, I took Jason's suggestion to start at two o'clock on Tuesday, February sixth, and we'll work on having all the departments present that day, and we'll just work through the entire process, just reviewing each individual budget. And then, um, a week later, we'll meet again to review everything, so you'll have time to look through the packets and, um, have any questions prepared. And then, um, at the end of that meeting at five o'clock, we'll probably have to have a special meeting for, um, the maximum property ta, you have to have a, you have to set a public hearing for the maximum property tax dollars to be certified for levy.
Ron, do those days work for your schedule?
I'll try to make them work. You said it's February the sixth?
Yes. Tuesday, February the sixth at two PM, we'll start with all the department heads. And I've listed them out there on the schedule that I provided. And then, um, the following week, we'll meet again to review the entire budget. Um, I'll go through the revenues and the expenses and, and do the explanation that I've done for the last few years for you.
So you need a motion to set that public hearing?
Yes, please.
Motion, I'll make a motion for Tuesday, February thirteenth at five PM.
Yes.
Second.
Any public comment?
February the thirteenth.
Roll call, please.
I'm confused, I was on the sixth.
The, the, the public hearing would be on the thirteenth, Tuesday the thirteenth, a week later. And that's just for the maximum levy, um, is one of the requirements for the public hearing, there's an additional public hearing that's gonna have to be set, um, and we'll probably be able to do that on the city council workshop, or the city council meeting, but I need to verify that with, um, the county to make sure that I'm on the right track for the date.
Okay, I'm caught up.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Jacob.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Victor.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Ordinance in the resolution, A, ordinance reducing terms of the library board from six to three.
This is the third reading.
Make a motion to amend.
Second.
Any public comment? I've been told that feels like a jail cell when you're, when you're.
Long time.
Six years, roll call, please.
Jason.
Me? Yes.
Victor.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes.
Resolution approving and authorizing executive of the development agreement by and among the city of Carter Lake, one oh seven oh five South one hundred and forty-seventh Street LLC, DBA, Levine Enterprises, Patriot Custom Metals LLC, Palm Shield.
This is the resolution to adopt that developer agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Hazelwood's still here, if you have any questions or concerns, any public comment? Roll call, please.
I have a public comment.
Come on up.
What is he, what is he going to do and where is he going to be, or where's this entity gonna be located? Could I have just a little bit more information, please?
The building next to the golf course, the big warehouse, the tools company, they moved, he purchased it, he's planning on building two more facilities, bringing in eighty jobs from Ralston. He's currently operating his facility in Ralston, so he's relocating it here.
To do what?
Metals.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Victor.
Yes.
Jackie.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Mr. Levine and everybody involved, that, that was a long process, but, uh, Paula and her team also helped out a lot, so, thank you.
Thanks for coming to Carter Lake.
Item C, resolution to adopt ubiquity's right-of-way agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
That's the one that I was most concerned about, to have an, our attorney look at.
The right-of-way agreement.
It has to do with, um.
Is Bob here? No, we got no Bob.
No, none of them are here.
I'll second, uh, are we supposed to have a second to talk about it?
Yeah, we're supposed to second for you.
I'll second, that's what we can talk about it, uh.
Like at the, the workshop, I thought that we should maybe put some procedures in place to get ahead of it, but I mean, if the council's comfortable moving forward, it's yours call.
I'd like to see somebody's eyes on, somebody, his eyes on it.
Was this what, uh, Jason and Aaron and, uh, Bob was gonna discuss?
Yeah.
So we can keep their feet on the fire so we don't end up with a mess?
Yeah, and it's the same that's going through, you know, Omaha's doing it, it's in the Florence area, it's, you know, it's, you can't stop them, there's nothing we can do, We can just work with them to provide the utility and make sure that we're doing our due diligence to be proactive on where they're putting it and knowing the, the scheduling of events that they're gonna do. That's the biggest, what we need to be on top of.
Somebody reached out to Jackie and I about, and they were concerned about the city's data security, about becoming a smart city, and I don't think, but I don't think this is that. I think this is just putting the infrastructure into, to be able to do that at some point.
They mentioned the first time they came in front of us that this would lead to being a smart city.
But if the city don't sign on to their, their system, I don't think.
They're just bringing the infrastructure to allow multiple different entities to sell us fiber optics and not be stuck by Cox Cable.
Yeah, exactly. It should bring more competitive people to the market.
Cox Cable has been, we've been dealing with over the last month.
Well, okay.
We need more options.
They have their own internet service that they have partnered with, so it's not, you're not gonna have a lot of options. You're only gonna have that one other option.
I believe there's a few options that sell through their fiber.
Not with, not with internet. They're partnered with an internet company.
But you have to get that infrastructure in the ground to be able to even have options is the thing.
Yeah.
If we don't.
But they're not gonna let anybody just use it because they're part, they wanna?
But that's, that's their option. I mean, that's, it's their system until it's?
Nobody up to date has brought us a fiber yet, or I mean, to, to use for the internet here. It's, it's an option that we need, I think.
You have something on it, Ray?
Yeah, I, well, not with this particular company, but with, uh, I've got a, my background is in this type of stuff, and what they're doing is they'll put in a, an infrastructure, they're building it all over town, and they sell space on this for other companies to get on it. Like, uh, now Google, they're the big one that's doing all over town, and, uh, there's smaller ones, you see it all over. Whenever you see these big spools with a big orange on it, they're putting fiber in someplace. And what they're doing is they're making what they call a fiber highway. And what they do is they put in the infrastructure and everything like Aaron's talking about.
Up banks.
And then they sell space on it, just like Google over there sells space in their data center for people. That's where the cloud stuff is. And that's all they do is they, they put stuff in and they sell the space, the highest bidders.
Isn't there like five or seven different?
There's quite a few large companies that, you know, every area has different companies.
Their big two that they were putting in, they were gonna?
I was reading right off the bat. We have the option of ubiquity and Google right from the start.
In those tubes they're putting in, there's hundreds of fibers in it.
Yes.
Well, it's just recommended to me that we make sure that we get it right on something this big. That's why I recommended having the attorney look at it.
I mean, it's still gonna be privately held. The city's not gonna be responsible for maintenance and upkeep. This is a privately held utility.
We're just giving them the right to?
Yes, we're just giving them the right-of-way space. We're, we're not taking on, we're not taking on the utility.
I would like to see if we can break up the permit a little bit into phases or something, so we're not?
That's what I recommended at that workshop. If you guys could take a little time in this area, town first, and completed before you start digging in the next.
Yeah, give us a sequence of events of the areas and the timeframes of where they're going, not what I expressed to them.
We can work with Bob.
We're all aware that, that Bob has two guys under him. I mean, there, there's really not staff there if you expect him to watch these guys for the next six months on a daily operation.
This does appear to give, this would give them a license as best I can tell, looking at it, just quickly here, in all of the public right-of-way within the city.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept. Roll call, please.
Jackie?
No.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Item B, resolution designating banking signatures. That would just basically be adding Jason Gunderson.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Public comment, roll call, please.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
What's that?
Do we need to abstain from that?
No, no, you don't.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Resolution to designate newspaper publisher.
Unless you're gonna make money off of it, then you got bigger problems.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the non-probably, right?
Yeah. Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yeah.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Resolution to designate annual auditor. Jackie Wall, you kinda had some questions. Did you come up with options or what do you want?
No, I think you, you have to put it out there, and I think we need to set it now, so if we wanna look next year ahead of time, would be the better way to do it.
Well, I'm gonna? Should we start looking now for next year?
Well.
Is it I.R.S.?
Think about it, you know, decide if we need to, if we want.
Motion to approve the?
Who's the auditor?
Uh, it's Schroder.
Schor?
Schor.
Associates?
Schor.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Depository resolution.
It was for American National?
Yes.
And Bankers Trust.
Bankers Trust. Where, where are those investments at?
They are with I-Pate. I-Pate is, uh,
Do we need to prove that?
I'm not gonna be able to say it now, but it's, it's, a lot of cities invest their funds into that, so I have moved.
So we need to designate them as a depositor as well?
No, this, this, this is for, um, this is what you're saying, hold on.
Thought it's for receivable.
So this is basically saying that we will not keep more than nine million dollars in each account with, uh, American National Bank and Bankers Trust. So if, if we were to, at one point, we adjusted this when we had all the funds coming in, and we were holding the bond fund before we were making all the payments out on the community center, so we were at like thirteen million. So we raised a, we did an adjustment, uh, a new resolution to raise us to thirteen million dollars. So now we're going back down. We've spent all the money on the community center. We've spent all the money on the sewer project. You know, those projects are completed. So I lowered it back to nine million. We won't have more than nine million in each one of those accounts. But American National only has like about two and a half, and there's seven million, and I don't know. The, the interest that we've made, uh, I deposited seven million over there, um, starting back in October, and there's been about ninety thousand dollars in interest that's accumulated on that already, and that's, um, through Bankers Trust and I-Pate.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, approve Bankers Trust and American National.
Second.
Public comment, roll call, please.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Wage resolution for Elizabeth.
Can these, can the officers go as a group or do them each separate?
I think we need to do them all separate.
We need to do all of them separate. Uh, you're, yes, we need to do all of them separate. They're, um, they're actually, and Jackie asked earlier, uh, all the wage resolutions that you do are, go into a resolution book, and when the auditor comes in, they go and verify that the wage resolution that's in the book is what's in payroll. And if it doesn't match up, then they start asking why. And sometimes we find out that, um, somebody's been here five years, so they got that, that longevity bump, and we didn't catch it on a resolution, so we'll have to, you know, that helps us catch those things along the way when we're dealing with between forty, you know, twenty-five to, to thirty employees on a, on a yearly basis.
I'll make a motion to approve Elizabeth Sanders.
Second.
Public comment, roll call, please.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Wage resolution for Nicholas.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Nicholas Dargy. Second.
Public comment, roll call, please.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Wage resolution for Edward.
These next seven are all community center part-time, correct?
Yeah. So, well, they're all part-time. You wanna explain the fitness instructors so that they understand what, what's going on with them?
The, uh, the two off, the, the first two are police officers, and they're by the, they're by the contract, it was twenty-seven sixty. The second one was Nick Dargy is thirty-four twenty-eight.
Um, Ed Clary, Jessica Clausen, Tasha Conley, Andrea Huey, Stacy Mache, Michelle Salerno, and Paris Scott are all, uh, group fitness instructors at the community center. They were all previously at the Feel Good Factory, and we brought them over to the community center, and all of the classes have had attendance, so.
So how many hours a week are each one of them getting on average?
When I turn in their payroll every two weeks, there hasn't been one that, well, I think one week, one of them had seven classes on that check, but usually they range from three to five.
So it's twenty-five dollars per class?
We just can't set a price and then let them all have it?
Twenty-five dollars per class.
Twenty-five dollars per?
You know, make it one motion, set a class, and not have to get each one?
No, we gotta do them individual.
Well, you have in the packet one resolution for all.
We actually have one for all of them.
And these classes are all free to the members. That's it.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
So we can take them all as one?
You should, actually, yeah.
All right.
Make a motion to accept wage resolutions for Edward Clary, Jessica Clausen, Tasha Conley, Andrea Huey, Stacy Mache, Michelle Salerno, and Paris Scott. Twenty-five dollars per class. Second.
Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Who made the second?
Jason.
Oh, okay.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, looks like we're down to comments. We'll start at the public. Any comments, questions, gripes, complaints, concerns?
All of them.
Compliment?
Thank you very much. You guys did a super job yesterday for that volunteer dinner, and it was really good, and you can do it again next year if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that mean you're gonna volunteer again for us?
What?
You're gonna volunteer again?
Sure.
You can come.